Yeah, there we go. The right, um, without further ado, um. We're recording this. Um, okay, so. This evening, um, I kind of. There is a lot of information to talk about. Um, when we talk about the history of the city's budget over the past few years. Why it is where it is and and different things that are useful for thinking about. Um, where it will go over the next several years depending on, you know, um. City finance policy choices with, you know, what we do with the budget. And then what, you know, the city does in terms of. What it actually realizes in revenue and and what it implements in terms of expenses. Based on the adopted budget and, you know, community desire for services. So the first work session tonight really, and I have a PowerPoint presentation here, I'm gonna throw a bunch of bar charts at you, so. Forgive me for that, and this is gonna be a bit more about what's been going on the past few years. It sets the stage for what I would think about the next few. Questions?
No, no.
Oh, oh, I thought you were. She was flagging me down.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, it's okay, it's okay. Okay, so just. It's that. There we go. Okay, um. Just a bit about print. The primary, the city, the city pretty much has, the city has a variety of different types of funds, but the vast majority of them are broken down. Broken into two types of funds. Whether they're operating funds, meaning they're doing operations, maintenance, services, provision on a day-to-day basis. Spending money doing things. Those are our operating funds. Um, and then the city, the other vast majority, actually, the, 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 the single most number of funds that we have. At the city are capital funds, and those are the funds where we account for things being, new things being built, basically. Okay, um, one important thing to say is that with our operating funds, and we'll get into them, but, um, three of them. Are, uh, once new projects are built and done in the capital funds. Then it's the responsibility of the operating funds to pay for maintaining them. Once they're. Done as a capital project, ongoing maintenance operations are the responsibility of the operating. Respectable operating plans. So what are our operating funds? They're just on the, on the board here, the, um. Not the biggest one, but the one with all the city departments in it, that's the general fund, and that's really distinguished by the fact that it's the only fund that gets. Taxer, property tax revenue, um, so that's kind of a defining distinguishing thing, but that's where the library department, public safety. All the different public services with them, with employees, providing departmental services, um, that's where that is. We have a streets fund. Um, that fund is basically for maintaining and doing replacement projects on right-of-way, whether it's sidewalks, paths. Trails, um, and streetlights, and streets, of course, that are city facilities, um, West Union and Glencoe Road notably not. City facilities were responsible for, um. Commercial, Commercial Street used to be county way, way, way back in the day, and county gave it to us, I believe, back in the sixties. And then North Avenue was a county facility until about three and a half, three, three and a half years ago, and then it was given to us in the very same way. The Commercial Street was given to the city back in the sixties with a $300,000 reserve for, um, repairs for it. Uh, we have a water fund, um. Water delivery system upkeep, um, Jesse May's fund, operation of this facility as a rental and the pavilion outside. And then in the new, in the new budget you all adopted back in June, um, we moved some services, some services responsibility for facilities out of the general fund. In particularly, in particular, the library department and the Parks and Rec Department. Um, primarily into the building and ground maintenance fund, and so. That is where we account for all of our facilities and grounds repair and upkeep, buildings and such. Um, but if it's a library building, the library department transfers money, some of its resources into the building and grounds maintenance fund to pay for that. And Parks and Rec Department, same thing, um, mowing of different parks and that sort of thing. Um, that department sends money in a transfer to the building and grounds maintenance fund, um, every year, certainly for two years in biennium. What is the city water fund? Um, it's an enterprise fund and, um, which basically means. It's a, it, we account for operation of this water, city water utility, sort of like it's a nonprofit business. We charge fees, not taxes, the fund charges fees, um, for service, um, and that service is. Delivery of, the state of delivery of clean water to homes, because this is that sort of thing that are customers. Um, whether they're, whether they're watering the lawn or taking showers or whatever they're doing. Um, it's a business basically for the city. No tax revenue goes into the water fund, it is, it is strictly speaking what the water fund does in terms of. Um, selling water and then taking account of it's where it buys water from or the cost of it. And then there is a margin in there that we tend to have, um, and that's been growing over time, and that's how the water fund has helped the general fund pay for its expenses. Um, so here's a breakdown of what the water fund pays for, you know, move the camera a little bit. With a projector, oh, roll, and I appreciate it. Actually, listen to this loud. Actually, if you wouldn't mind the bar chart, actually. Yeah, you're fine, you're fine, thank you for moving that, that's good. Yeah, it's, it's kind of a tough.
Well, the chart to show instead of the.
Yeah, yeah, the chart should maybe. More useful, um, I think, in terms of. Kind of different segments of information. So I'm gonna show you a series of charts, and this is really just, the goal here is I. I've, I'm trying to set up information for you all to begin to kind of ask. Um, the types of questions that you've been, you've been beginning to ask in kind of different bits here and there with different parts of city council meetings. So I'm gonna throw a number of charts at you that look somewhat like this, but the intent is what's been going on since FY twenty-one at least. Um, and FY twenty-one is really sort of. The, sort of the end of Sunset Ridge growth. Significant Sunset Ridge growth, it was one of the sort of trailing off in terms of a number of homes added each year, and then. Um, what, and then since then with Bryn Hill beginning to build out and sell the homes and people within that sort of thing. So this is kind of the, the post-Sunset Ridge and then Bryn Hill period of the past few years. So, um. The water fund, of course, pays for personnel, we have, we have staff that take care of, um, the water system, uh, take care of customer service on different water issues. Um. Go out and verify meters, hang seven-two-hour water shut-off notices on doors, um, the few that we have. Um. Which, by the way, we're actually phasing out, I'll talk more about that later, um, because of software improvements, and then. Um, you know, there's, you know, there's, there's a little bit of overhead from administration and, you know, involved in. In some of the personnel costs, but it's mostly the people on the ground, doing vast majority of people on the ground doing the work of the water fund. Um, materials and services, that's buying water, uh, that's all the equipment, replacement of equipment, um, the cost of the backhoe. Uh, that was purchased, all those sorts of things, um. That's, excuse me, no, no, not the backhoe, that's capital outlay. Um, materials and services, though, all the things, you know, all the purchases, including water wholesale from Joint Water Commission. For successfully delivering, safely delivering water. Um, capital outlay, vehicles, um, street sweeper a few years ago, the backhoe recently, um. And then other kind of major equipment if we need to get it. Debt service, um, the water fund has one, um, has debt, and that is from the large reservoir that's behind the new building. The two million gallon reservoir that was completed in FY twenty-three. And since then, we've been making debt service payments on that to the state's, um, Special Public Works Fund. Um, so that's a biannual payment, we just made one for, in November, for December first. So, um, that's where that is, and then transfers out, um. Overwhelmingly for transfers out, it's a combination of three different things. Um, the really big ticket items are the water, the, the water fund helps pay for. Different, the water component of different street improvement projects around town, anytime, it, where now anytime we do. Um, you know, if we do new street overlay and new sidewalks, what we'll typically do is kind of do, do a, you know. Project where we'll go in and at the same time upsize the pipes or replace the pipes or whatever, so it's not, we're not doing the same work twice. So when we have these new projects that, um, involve. Street maintenance and that keep or facilities expansion, and we have pipes underground that need to be replaced, not new. But upsized, replaced or up and or upsized, the water fund will transfer. Resources, its fair share, its calculated share of the resources for those projects. Over to the appropriate capital fund, cap, capital fund that'll pay for that. Um, the water fund helps pay for, um. Its share of right-of-way and other things, the grounds around the reservoir and the pump station and all that, so that's the buildings and grounds transfer. And then it does transfer money over to the general fund. Um, to pay for what has become an increasing gap, um, in resources for the general fund. So any questions so far about all this fascinating study? Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah, go for it.
Example of debt services that were taken on, um, in the outer areas of this charter.
I'm sorry.
Debt services examples, uh, can you cite examples?
It's, it's, it's just the rest, it's just the rest, the, the debt we pay, that we have the debt issue for the reservoir, the, the new reservoir, and that's it.
Okay.
That's the only, that's the only debt that the water fund has. Um, yeah. So we actually, there are only, we only have three debt instruments, three bonds right now, um, citywide, this one strictly in the water fund. One for the U R A, for the Glencoe Opportunity Area, that was the purchase of property and then work regarding it. And then, um, the transportation bond, remember the local fuel tax that was passed and all the projects that it paid for. That, that bond is strictly in the transportation bond fund and local fuel tax revenue is pledged to pay that debt service. Okay, so what's going on here? Um, there was kind of a jump in twenty-five, twenty-seven, um, past few years. Well, FY twenty-one, um, was a very expensive year, so one thing to keep in mind about these charts is. We began biennial budgeting in FY twenty-two. So FY twenty-one, the first column on the far left, that's, that's one year, but the other three bars, two years. So just to start off with, FY twenty-one was a very expensive year because that was only one year, not two. And that's because of all of the expense, the, the major expense on the reservoir. Otherwise, it was a pretty, you know, not a terribly expensive year, um, all things considered. But really, the big story is the, is the jump in the budget between FY three, between the last biennium, twenty-three, twenty-five. And the current one, and a couple of things are going on, really, um, number one. Um, you know, based on council priorities and budget, council pillars and budget priorities. Dustin worked through, um, figuring out the staffing and pay that would help us. Get employees that we need because we're stretched thin and taking care of our facilities, including water. And have some room to be more pay competitive, so that we weren't so vulnerable to poaching of employees. Um. Javier's, the loss of Javier in July was a very difficult, we, we budgeted expecting he would be here with us. Uh, but he left for a job at a different city, and so it's been. Dustin's put a lot of work into trying to move things around and, and get people hired and put into place. Um, to be efficient and move forward, but we haven't expanded still, per se. Um, there's a key hire that will be next, and that's kind of, that's what he's primarily working on right now from a staffing perspective, but. That's, that's, that's one of the big things that in the budget between twenty-five and twenty-seven. And then the other big thing that, that we did with the budget that you all, uh, it was in the adopted budget. Is we have a number of water projects that are either deferred. And Dustin has budgeted for it in this biennium. Or we have a number of projects, sort of like I mentioned before, major street capital projects where pipe needs to be upgraded and upsized underneath. So when you combine all of that, um, FY twenty-five, twenty-seven, that's, that's, that's a very big increase, um, over the previous biennium. Um. Then there's been a, there's been a growth in transfers out, explicit transfers out, let me get that to, to that in just a moment, but. Um, most of the, the, the transfers out, um, have mostly been to. Of projects outside and other funds that the water, water fund helps pay for, and then. The general fund, uh, assisting the general fund with, um, resource gaps, basically. But one thing I wanna kind of get into here before I go to the next slide. And that is that, um. It's, it's kind of a. When I worked on FY twenty-one budget, that was the first budget I worked on, um, when I was the city in my previous capacity. And in going through the budget. Um, and previous city management wasn't aware of this. Um. He had his hands full with none of the other things, but when I went through the budget, what I found was that since before twenty-seventeen. The city had. Assigned staff. To the water fund that shouldn't have been our waters. So prior to FY twenty, what we did was we, in twenty-one, we began the process of reversing. We didn't do it completely, but over time we've done it, um. Gradually rather than a big shocking change all of a sudden, so. The context for all these growth and transfers that sometimes seem big is. The water fund up until twenty-one. Had a number of employees in it that shouldn't have been, and it was purely for the sake of, well, there's money in the water fund, well, just. Put that person in the water fund and have their, that F T E paid for there. Um, that's not really how it's supposed to be done, and, and there are a couple of problems with that, it's not just. That probably shouldn't have been done. The other thing is. It obscures. How the city deals with its expenses, it makes it harder to tell the story to folks. Um. That, that low property tax rate you pay is deceptive because the, it, you might be only paying that much, that little property tax rate. Meanwhile, what you're not paying attention to is that your water, you know, is that, is that water fund resources are covering all that gap. Whether employees are in that fund that shouldn't be and they're off the books of the general fund. In, in different departments. Or whether we move those employees into the general fund in appropriate departments. Um. I, I would say the only department that didn't have this problem was the library, library department is always very transparent, and, you know, they have standards to meet at the county. With W C C L S. The library was the only department that didn't have this weird. F T E assignment issue with the water fund. Um, but, you know, but once you move all those, so that makes the general fund look like it's not, it's. Oh, it's staff, just, it's not, you know, it doesn't have any staffing issues, it's where we're able to operate on low taxes. Well, not really, the water fund was kind of hiding all that is the bottom line. And so I guess the, the, the big story, what I, I hope to get across partly here is that. Some of the transfer activity that's been going on has been as a result of. You know, instead of the water fund paying for that F T E. Money is being sent out of the water fund to pay for it where the cost is being accounted for more accurately. And so that's, that's, that's part of the shift that's been going on. And it's just been a long process, um, but, you know, here we are. So what are water, any questions about that or questions so far? It's just a lot of info, um, sorry, Councilman Page and Pape. This is, this is a very boring but, but serious, you know, issue that, um, you know, you've heard before, so. Okay. So. What are water fund resources? Um, so basically water fees that we charge, loan proceeds. And then any transfers in occasionally, and then other, we, we get a bit of interest, um, from reserves that, that are, that, you know, get to earn interest, not being spent. Um, water fees overwhelmingly are the big revenue source, um, most of the time. And again, the column on the left for FY twenty-one is only one year. FY, then the rest of them are, are biennial two-year periods, um, so. Water fees are the, by far the biggest resource for the, and that's, that's basically charging people for their monthly water bill, whether they're businesses. Or homes, that's charging people to use water right off of a hybrid for emergency or commercial reasons, uh, there's a variety of ways that we sell water. Uh, most, most people are used to paying their water bill every month. Um, but we do have some odd reservoir water draws that we charge for, and we have some unauthorized ones that we have to choose people to, and we. I know, that happens too, um, but anyway. Um, now, in FY twenty-three, we did the first in quite a while, water methodology, water rate methodology update study, and I believe that was kind of in the master list of documents. That you've all seen, or maybe you didn't get to it, and that's okay, if you haven't seen it and you didn't find it or it wasn't clear where it was, I'm happy to chase that in for me. But that report was done in FY twenty-three, and it was meant to give some rationale for a couple of things, um, number one. We need to, we'd like to update water rates in a way that reward people for being water efficient, so kind of adjusting. Base rates and low volume water usage in a way that makes it cheaper for those folks to pay for water. And then if you spend a lot of, use a lot of water, if you're inefficient, then the methodology setup rates so that there's a bit of a jump. Between low water users and higher water users. So the idea was to reward people who are more water efficient and people who are really. Use, didn't, didn't care about that, probably pay a higher water bill, is the idea. And then the other thing was, the city hadn't raised water rates, um, in eleven years prior to FY twenty-four. Um, if your water bill went up, that was because of how much water you actually used, it wasn't due to any sort of rate hike. So, um, FY twenty-four was the first year, um, that, excuse me, that's wrong, actually, FY twenty-five was the first year. FY twenty, the, the budget as adopted, it was chosen FY twenty-four, there would still be a rate freeze in FY twenty-four. So last year, FY twenty-five was the first year where there was a rate hike in eleven years. And then for this year, FY twenty-six, that was the second ever, um, in twelve years' time. Um, since FY twenty-one, it's up, it's, it's been up five percent annually, water revenues overall, um, and that's reflective of just growth. After FY twenty-six, Bryn Hill's gonna be built out, and there won't be a ton of new growth and development, it's gonna, it'll be infill sorts of things, and we'll talk about that in the U R A meeting tonight. But after FY twenty-six, because we're not gonna see a lot of new homes build, or, you know, a lot of. Uh, kind of, there's one parcel that might see, you know, there's a ten-acre industrial parcel, um, that might use some water. But the bottom line is after this current fiscal year, when Bryn Hill's mostly built out. Um, growth in water revenue is gonna depend on, you know, rates going up or inexplicably. People using more water for no rational or predictable reason. So that's kind of, that's kind of where that is. Um, the reservoir had the loan draw, the loan draws that we had to pay for the reservoir, those were in FY twenty-one, and FY twenty-one and twenty-two. A little bit in twenty-three, so that's, that's the orange in the first two bars. And then, for whatever reason, this happened before I got here, I wouldn't have done it this way, but the reservoir was accounted, the reservoir construction was accounted for in the water fund. There, there wasn't a separate capital fund, special capital fund built for it, sort of like we did for the public works building so we could track. S D Cs versus other revenues paying for that building, state money paying for that other building. But the reservoir was all accounted for in the water fund, which is a little. Wouldn't have done it that way if I had set it up, if I was here to set it up. But anyway, because the water, the water reservoir, the new reservoir was accounted for in the water fund, the water S D C fund, capital fund transferred some money in. To pay for new growth's share of the need for the new reservoir, which was quite a bit of it. Um, uh, certainly not all, like, because we still had the loan, but that was for quite a bit of it. And then we do get some interest on, on money from the water fund, so that's kind of where it's coming from, it's, it, it. Not, you know, I, staff, prior staff, I've, I repeated the term, the water fund is the city's golden pool, so to speak, it's, it's really the, the major revenue generator. Um, we get, um, you know, in the millions of dollars in water revenues, the property tax revenues in the city for the first time this fiscal year ever. For the first time, the city will earn, uh, will get a million dollars, a little over a million dollars in property tax, but the water fund's been doing that for a while. And, and, and the city council has full control over the water fund's revenues, you all set the rates? Um, if you wanna keep people's, have, keep people's water bills constant, you don't have to raise rates, um, but if you wanna stay. Pace with inflation, um, or, and above that, or just below inflation, however, you all, you all adopt rates, so that's up to you.
Yeah, Councilor Governor. Uh, I'll just.
We, we can move this from the regular meeting into working here, so.
Councilor Governor, um, so just to clarify, what you. The FY twenty-six, we either raise rates to keep up with spending, or we need to find revenue somewhere else for kind of spending, is that kind of what I'm hearing?
Correct, after this year, yes, yeah, it, it, it's pretty much with Bryn Hill being.
Six is correct.
Good, yeah, they, I, um, they, I agree with you, very nice, uh, or, or serially limited. Um, anyway, the, um. The, uh, yeah, it, Bryn Hill will be built out in FY twenty-six, and that means after this current fiscal year, that's kind of when. The city is going to have to be, you know, a little more deliberate about what, how, what it wants to do with revenue growth, it has more control, but it's about. Rates or new, or new revenue sources. Okay, um, now, the general fund, how does general fund expend, uh, how's it expended for services? Um, we'll talk about the transfers that have come in, but just a bit of background about how the departments have, have been spending money. The general fund basically since FY twenty-one has, has grown in expenses annually by eight percent, totally expenditures. Annually, new growth has been about accountable to, you know, new household growth and therefore services demand growth has been three to six percent annually. Uh, growth, just, it's just basically been however fast Bryn Hill has built and however fast homes are sold and people moved into them. Now, unfortunately, because of the COVID area, COVID era, so half of FY twenty-one, the COVID shutdown era. And then a good part of FY twenty-two with, with kind of slow recovery in FY twenty-three, I would say. Uh, but inflation was pretty atrocious, you know, for about a year and a half, different months, so it ranged anywhere from. You know, two point seven percent over the past year, the number of different things haven't been as expensive year over year, so. Uh, it's, it's ranged from two and two point seven to seven percent annually inflation, man, it's, it's been all over the place, and it's not been favorable. Um. Overall expenditures in the general fund are actually down a little bit, the, the budget you all adopted is. Ever so slightly lower, but it is still less than the budget for FY twenty-three, twenty-five, and a big part of that is that. Um, we had to, the big cutback there was the planning department, um, that, that was, that was. Kind of the, the major cut to the, to the department, but otherwise, things have. Kind of grown at the rates, different department expenses have grown at the different rates, you know, ahead, overhead, city admin, finance, that's been up seven percent annually. Um, public safety and library, uh, library's been up ten point eight percent annually, but public safety has averaged eleven plus, um, annually. Um, year-over-year expense, expenses going up. Um. Parks and Rec has been up eighteen percent annually, but that's simply just because, um, we moved. We're moving staff out of the water fund over to Parks and Rec.
Councilor Governor, Dean, um, so why is library up eleven percent? Ten point.
Um, they, they have had to staff up, um, in correspondence, I mean, they're kind of our only retail department, so they've, part of it is they've had the staff up. Um, to match, well, kind of have people at enough people during hours for the additional population. Um, that's been it, and then, um, well, that's kind of been the, the main thing, and then. Just different cost, different costs of theirs, um, they, they follow certain accounting. Expenditure rules and some other things, so that's been a big part of it.
The public safety have eleven percent. James Page. The public safety have eleven percent annually, that that was pretty the overtime they were reading till last year. Every time is now gone, right? So we're not spending overtime money, so that decrease.
We, great question, Councilor Page. We actually still do spend on overtime, but it's far lower. So I think, so like for the extra time at Garlic Festival is always the overtime and a few other things. Um, so there's always overtime of some kind, but. What's down and not there anymore is that we don't, we aren't using overtime anymore. To do those occasional twenty-four hour coverages like we used to. So the amount of overtime has gone way down.
So we have forward-looking percentages of how that should look next year with the uh, the fast number of time which we were, we were spending. This is where something to pass.
Well, the the col- the far column on the far right is, is this current, is this current new biennium, twenty-five, twenty-seven?
So we saw the overtime things in, so that should, that should kind of know of that.
Comprehend, yeah, yeah. Well, um. The overtime is the unpredictable, we. Overtime and how much it goes is the unpredictable part of the public safety contract. Year over year. The planned amount of overtime and everything else, the planned cost for, they're all in for the officers that we have. That tends to go up seven to nine percent annually, so anything above that is. Unpredicted overtime.
Thank you.
But it is way down because of the changes. Um, and the community development overall, it's eight percent. The, the annual budget for, um. Community development is down eight percent from F Y twenty one, uh, you know, major, major cut to that department. And here the general fund resources getting into the transfers. Um, property taxes are a major component. Um, they go up from new growth, we've seen. Property taxes go, property tax revenue go up through three to six percent. Um, and then inflation, in addition to that, can add to that. But just talking about new growth every year, that's three to six percent in, in, in new accounts, new growth. So we've had a robust, um, five plus percent, five, eight, nine percent growth in property tax revenues annually. And so it's the combination of those two things, the measure fifty-three percent on everybody's account with a home. Or a property already, already here, and then the addition of the new on top of that. So that explains property tax growth. Uh, over the past few years. Um, the other big source of revenue for the city, actually, if you add up all property taxes and then you add up all the fees that we get. Franchise fee, all the franchise fees we get from utility accounts revenue in the city. It's actually still slightly higher than property tax revenues annually. So the franchise fee we earn on. Telephone, cellphone, cable, all. Water, power, not water, not water. We don't charge a franchise fee to residents for getting city water, like, we don't charge that. But, um, the franchise on P G E and gas, those natural. Um, five percent of those companies' revenues from sales within the city. We get five percent of that revenue, so that's the franchise fee. Um, intergovernmental revenue from the state, that those are the sin taxes, alcohol and cannabis, basically, and it's, there's strictly a population formula. So when we add population, that adds to, um, the revenue we get from them. And then we get some grants, they're occasional, unpredictable and earmarked, so we really don't like to look at those as. Part of this in a growing, sustainable way, certainly. And then, and then the transfers in, um, over time. They've grown. You know, the first column is one year, so they've been, you know, they've grown and they've grown significantly over the past few years. Um, but again, part of that is ending the water fund staffing. That we talked about earlier, having, having staffing in the water fund that shouldn't have been in the water fund. So instead of the fund paying for that employment and. Having the employment in the appropriate general fund department and the water fund, so it's kind of a, it's, it looks like transfers have been going up. They have, but it's in part due to that changing how we're accounting. But it is also due to increasing expenditures, um, with population growth and inflation. Versus, um, for everybody who has been in the, in the, for every existing own business, you know, that three percent revenue. Growth cap every year, that, that gap has partly explained the, the, um. The transfers. So the water fund being the only fund where revenues are fully controlled by the city. Uh, by city council ultimately, that's been the source of the gap, um, as. Expenses go up well over three percent annually. Um, just from inflation over three percent, well over three percent. But property tax bills being limited to three percent growth annually. What it, you know, what it boils down to is any year where, um, you have inflation over, over three, four percent, you're, you're already in trouble. Um, so, there's that. Any questions about those things? Okay. Um, so at the different neighborhood meetings, I've, I've kind of just been sharing some of this, not. In so in detail about the funds and where the revenue sources and that sort of thing. But I have been talking about measure fifty and how, you know, property taxes. And this is just a, an example of kind of talking about the tax bill that we have. Um, you know, I think it's, it's been interesting talking to residents. A lot of them, when they pay their, their property taxes, they. They, um, they don't take a lot of time looking at the tax bill. Um, you know, what, where does their money go? What tax rates are they paying? And so, um, you know, when we talk about the cities have low taxes or, you know, has never raised taxes itself. You know, they, you know, the context is, um. When you talk about, I guess what I should say is when you talk about the fact that the city portion of the tax bill, people in the city paid. You know, their fourteen percent of their annual tax bill, only fourteen percent is actually going to the city to pay for city services. Um, the rest of it is going to all of the, the other agencies, Washington County School District. Um, so those are two big ones, a twelve round fire and rescue among others. Um, so. That's why it's kind of difficult to talk about property taxes in the city. Um. There's kind of this education effort in talking about the fact that, well, you know, the rate is small, but the rate's small, but that that just means. Other agencies are getting the best, best majority of the tax from the taxes that you're paying. Um, it's not staying locally and paying for things that you use every single day, um, in your home or going out and about. So, um, anyway, just some context for what we're talking about. And then just kind of to tee up some of the questions about, you know, there's been questions about the, you know, would a levy off in the future be, um, a worthwhile idea? And so I, this chart I wanted to share with you, it's, um, six forty right now, but. This chart is back from the, the local op, uh, local option levy effort a few years ago to, um, pay for additional police services. And the big thing we kind of just wanted to show here is. Um, the top three bars in this chart are North Plains. And what would happen if different, different local option levy rates were considered? Um, on top of the permanent rate that residents already pay, residents pay only the permanent rate at two dollars seventeen cents per thousand, uh, assessed value. And so three different local option levy rates were considered as scenarios to add to that permanent rate that residents are already, uh, paying. And as you can see, all three were said that if the levy had passed. And i- if the levy, if the levy going out to voters was any one of those three scenarios. It was still less than what the city of banks pays with their local option, like the city. Levy that was on the ballot was always planned to be less than what our neighbors pay. Um, and it's still didn't pass sixty forty. So, um. It, it's, it's, it's definitely a lot of uphill work to communicate all of this and talk about the value of all this and, and where the gaps are. But. You know, it's a lot of info, there's a lot more to talk about, but I wanted to just kind of get questions from you. And then ask what kind of questions you hope to be. You kind of hope to get into based on this information moving forward is the bottom line. But we, I wanted to start with what the water fund pays for and. What those transfers have been like and what revenues have been like and how expenditures have been over the past few years to give a bit more context. Then you could get into during the budget process.
James Page, uh, thank you for having a special session. We discussed this many times in the past. I think it's very important to understand what the funds are paying for. And that's credibility, so it isn't like we're trying to hide anything or disguise where it goes from. Plus, it gives us a, an idea of what we're working with and how we can solve the problem. Uh, I've always said for the last several years that our water bill is. Our silent tax to help pay for other things we're doing, and let's clean it up. If people want to have more police officers, that's good and fun that, right? So, uh, I'm very much for, uh, putting a local option levy onto the ballot. If people want it, it's almost like put it for shut up. Um, it gives everybody the understanding of what we're doing. If we cannot afford it, then we have to make cuts elsewhere. As, at, as appropriate. So I think a local option levy, very plain, say this is going to pay for that. And when that happens, we will take out the water fund and put it over here. This, this will be a wash, pretty much. Uh, as long as the water fund does get lowered by that amount, that'd be great. I want to do the water fund where it is and then do an extra. Fee and start there. E- even the books out, make it show that everybody understands what we're paying, and once we have clean books, we can figure out what we're doing.
This, Councilor Number, I agree. I mean, that's this, so in, just to pull. No. That's, uh, that's why I asked relatives to, um. To have to, this because I want us to look at what's in the budget. And my personal opinion is if, if we are going to fund the police officer, if we're going to fund anything else. Um, it needs to go through a local levy and we need to give people the option to vote on it because. I'm not a big fan of, of, uh, deep suppression. On the water. Anybody else?
I can fix it.
I know we're playing a little bit of musical microphones here, but Councilor Page, and I just wanted to echo the sentiment. Um, you know, I think we, we all know the pain that we face sometimes when we are paying our water bill monthly. Um, I also understand the cost of everything, um, and I would, I am aligned with moving forward and. And see the sentiment of the residents. If a local option levy is something that we want, if not, um, we're going to go back to the drawing board. So I, I am aligned. I'll pass it over to anyone else. If anyone else needs this microphone, let me know.
And, Councilor Governor. Councilor Governor, again, just to be clear, I, when I say that, I say for, my opinion is if we're doing local option levy. It is a dollar for dollar pull out of the water bill fees because we should be, this should be at zero, uh, some game, we should not be increasing. Uh, if we need to increase, then I need to go local option levy and, in my opinion, and if we are, um. I just lost it, sorry, give me a second. Um, oh, and and if we're going to, uh. To add anything additionally that, that is something that needs to go to voters, we also need to look at, are there areas that, you know, things have changed or, or we do need to make cuts? And I, I mean, to be honest, the budget is pretty lean at the moment, but that is something that voters are going to have to make some decisions on, or, or the council is, one or the other. Is, because we can't pay for everything. So that's the bottom line is we have to have a balanced budget. And it seems like there's mostly consensus that if we're going to go forward, this needs to be a local option levy, but I also want to look at. Just based on the neighborhood meetings, what are the. Other levers that we have, if, if the voters don't want the local option levy and we're not going to raise fees, then in order to not deplete our reserves or. What cuts are we going to have to make? What cuts are available? Obviously, we haven't funded the police officer yet, so that's. You know, there, but what are the things that we're going to have to look at? So, ca- because what, what I'm trying to get to is basically options A, B, and C. And then have a good conversation and make it sit. If that makes sense. Anybody else? Bill, any, heart any thoughts?
Um, not really. I mean, I, you know, take your time, it's a lot of. It's a lot of flinners and, and that sort of thing, but, but it. No, what we want to do with you is, is truly to kind of boil it down, it is, you know. What does the community want and what's, what's if, what's it want to pay for? And if it doesn't want to. Do A, then that kind of forces B or C. I mean, it, it, that's. But, you know, it's, there's preferences and there's half, and you can't fight the half, unfortunately.
And just one more, one more thing, uh, Councilor Governor, again, um. We will at some point be bringing the intergovernmental agreement on the W C C L S levy to pass, but that does not even bring us revenue until twenty seven. So that's something that would give us some level of revenue, but, uh, not for other year. Year and a half, whatever it is. So something to keep in mind, but don't, um. I wouldn't go spending checks right now. I'd just be super cautious and let's have better reserves is my vote on this. Um, let's make sure that we're preparing for a storm because the Muslims coming. All right, any tales? All right, so. During the work session at six fifty-four, uh, we'll be back in session, so.